Oh, no, we almost ran out of the alphabet on the consent agenda is what you said.
We had, we had double error.
Yeah, did we? Okay, yeah, okay.
The eight hundred and twenty-one page back is what we were talking about.
Oh, okay.
Again, that's you, right?
Welcome to our meeting. The date is September nine, two thousand twenty-five. The time is seven P. M. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, let's all rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are the city clerk, Jill Grenier, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, Patrick Brown, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Councilmember Nickerson has removed seven R from the consent agenda. Do council members wish to remove any other items from the consent agenda? And also, council members, for your information, Mr. Pools has removed and wants to speak on seven H, seven R, seven U from the consent agenda. So those will also be polled. And to conclude then, we've polled seven H, seven R, and seven U from the consent agenda. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward. State your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. We now take up our Board of Equalization Matters. Council members, is there a motion to leave our regular meeting and convene as the Board of Equalization? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we go adjourn to a Board of Equalization.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard. Any discussion?
Please vote. We're missing one. Mike? Okay. I got it marked. Motion adopted.
Item six A, consideration of determining benefits for railside business improvement district reductions. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. We're ready for a long evening of budget. So tonight before you is railside on determining the reductions for the assessment. They are, there are people eligible, eleven property owners who are eligible for a thirty percent discount. That reduction amounts to one thousand thirty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. And we'll reduce the request to a hundred fifty thousand, four hundred forty dollars and seventy-nine cents. So this, we are asking for council to approve the list of reductions.
And that's the motion you seek? Is there a motion, council members? Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we...
Approve.
Approve twenty twenty-five B E dash one.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Six B, consideration of determining benefits for railside business improvement district. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This is looking for council approval of doing the actual assessments of a hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents. The action item will come later in the agenda.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve twenty twenty-five dash B E two.
Mr. Brown.
Second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Doug? Doug? Do you want to vote? Motion adopted.
Six C, consideration of determining benefits for Fourth Street Business Improvement District reductions. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a, in the Fourth Street Business Improvement District, we have five property owners who have filed the proper documentation for a thirty percent eligible deduction. The total deductions is five seventy-five point nine oh. And we are looking for your approval of those five property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass twenty twenty-five dash B E three.
And Mr. Hossi.
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Six D, consideration of determining benefits for Fourth Street Business Improvement District. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we are asking for council approval of the net request for a special assessment for Fourth Street Business Improvement District of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and ten cents.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve twenty twenty-five dash B E four.
And Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Six E, consideration of determining benefits for Foner Park Business Improvement District. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. We are asking for council approval on doing special assessments in the Foner Park Business Improvement area for a total of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and two dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown.
Move we approve twenty twenty-five tech, B E tech five.
Mr. Stel.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Council members, is there a motion to leave the Board of Equalization and return to our regular meeting? Mr. Lanfair.
I'm sure we leave the Board of Equalization and return to our regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Neil.
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? With the exception of seven H, seven R, and seven U, but all the others from seven A through seven W, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass the consent agenda, items A through W minus H, R, and U.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard. Mr. O'Neil.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Seven H, approving update to the city's waiver fine schedule. Good evening, Mrs. Nonhoff. Please tell us about this.
So the Nebraska Legislature, effective September third, updated the speeding fines for the state of Nebraska. We are now matching our city code fines to state statute. We could not do this before state statute went into effect, so this is the first council meeting after state statute went into effect. So these literally just mirror state statute exactly.
Gerald Pools, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council. Just tawdry items. On some of these fines, I'd kind of like to see it increased. They got spilling contents of a vehicle. We have the cattle trucks that run through town, and you know, you've seen the trails that they've left. Is this being enforced on these cattle trucks? Because I see it so often, I wonder if that fine maybe needs to increase, you know, double it or something like that. And the other one is engine braking. I think we have, it's not a, I know this came up with the county board years ago, and the truck driver said, well, it's, it's a safety issue. We got to be able to slam on the brakes. But I lived across from the, I lived on Highway thirty-four for a while, and semi trucks, you can see the stoplight from a half, from a mile away, and you know when it's coming. And if you're attentive driver, I had a CDL license years ago. I know this, is if you're paying attention to the lights, you look for lights that are getting ready to turn red, that there's no reason to use hydraulic brakes when, there's no reason unless you're going to slam into somebody right away. And we have these signs all over town that engine brakes is prohibited, are prohibited. But we never publish a fine, you know, there's never a fine, and I think that fine should be, I think that one should be increased too, because it's, it's not a safety issue. It's a public nuisance issue. It's a quality of life issue, because, you know, these guys run all day and night, people trying to sleep. So that's, those are the two considerations I had on, on that. That's all I got. Thank you.
In reference to the fines that he's talking about, everything in chapter, all of the fines for twenty-two, for chapter twenty-two, those are actually dictated by state statute. So we have to, not only do our traffic and criminal codes match state statute word for word, our fines also match, and they by law have to match them or they cannot be done by waiver. So all of those in twenty-two, from thirteen to the end, those are actually all set by state statute, and we just match them.
Thank you, Mrs.
And actually raise them.
Thank you, Mrs. Nonhoff. Council, a motion is in order. Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash two eighty-nine.
And Mr. O'Neil.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to confirm, so when we collect these fines, do these, does this money go to the school system?
Yes.
Have to, you have to get to the podium. I'm sorry.
Yes, all of the fines for criminal and traffic citations go through the Hall County Court. That money is all collected, goes to the state, and then the state distributes it. None of it actually, we don't have a municipal court system. That would be the only way to keep fine money within Grand Island, and we don't have that, and we can't have one, because Nebraska Legislature says no.
Okay, so the beneficiary here is not the city of Grand Island, but the public school system?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Seven R, awarding land lease for digital infrastructure. Mr. Schmitz, tell us about this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have, I can pull up, put a few pictures on here, share hopefully. So we've had entities come to us for, I would say, the better part of seven, eight years, and we're very defensive about our infrastructure and, and its effect on our customer base. And so we've turned many, many of these away that have ended up other places. With the solar farm, kind of a out-of-the-box idea was hatched. We had a substation that's in the right location. Recently, we had AGI shutter their doors, and then we added ten megawatts of solar, which basically act as excess capacity on that substation. So looking at the substation, the location, the distances we had from residential customers, we thought, okay, if there's any situation where we would be open to it, this is it. So we did an RFP for land lease. Upon the land lease, we actually did out and did site investigations at several of these. The pictures on the screen are actually a similar build to what we'd be looking at. This one's south of Aurora. We took a decibel meter to all locations, measured those, and then with the help of legal, we actually researched what other entities were using as sound thresholds, and then we set ours five decibels lower than what the others were. And so in the end, the ambient noise just from the location in general actually likely end up being higher than what will be realized from this facility. In addition to the one in Aurora, we went a step further and even requested a sound barrier wall. So what it is, is a wall that's the full length of the exhaust that will sit approximately twenty feet back from the exhaust side and dissipate sound out and up. And also, the building will sit, be situated between, actually, I got pictures here. So the green block is approximately the location we're looking at. So that sits between Swift and wastewater plant as far as directional. I got one more picture. So that's the larger site. So you can see the distances away. At the one in Aurora, when you would drive a quarter mile away, it was basically indiscernible. The houses here are eighteen hundred feet to the north. The property line is about a quarter mile. And the one in Aurora did not have the dissipating wall that we planned to add. So those were the things we looked at. We did not want to add cost to our customer base. Another thing which you guys helped with last year to start this process was a lot of utilities have, they take up capacity. We didn't want to give up capacity, our generation capacity, so the requirement is this thing has to be a hundred percent interruptible. And what that means is anytime that it would put us to a new capacity requirement, we take them offline, and that's in the agreement. So it will not affect our generation requirement for the city. It has a very financially beneficial capability for the city, and then also, we've been very cognizant about the sound potential and have done great research on that. So I feel pretty confident in all those things. And I guess with that, I'll open up to questions.
Gerald Pools, did you want to speak?
Thank you again. I, in reading through the document they talked about, the company would pay eighteen thousand a year for the lease. They paid various sums to the, they paid two hundred fifty in sales tax, sixty thousand for, what are they, nine hundred, whatever, about a hundred and twenty-five, about one and a quarter million dollars about. And I just, and they're going to get, these companies come to Nebraska, and I think they take advantage of the cheap land and the cheap electricity, because they've got all this, this is the big money guys. Now, when I was a kid, if I was going to mine anything, I walked a ditch and got a pop bottle and got two cents for it, you know? I did a little bit of work. These guys are going to come in and make millions of dollars, get reduced electricity rates, I believe. Now, now, if they were paying residential rates, how much money would, would go to the electric company? How much, how much would that, what would be the difference between paying regular residential rates for electricity as opposed to about the one and a quarter million, which is kind of what's mentioned in the, in the file?
First of all, hundred percent agree with Jerry. That's the reason we've been very cautious with this, as far as our look at it. It's hard to compare them to residential because they're a demand customer, so they're based off a demand charge. How, how this will work is this is just the land lease portion. There will actually be an agreement that goes along with the rate they will be on, which is in city code. They will pay a distribution charge for the use of our distribution system, and if they don't run at all for a month, they still pay that demand charge, a hundred percent of it. And they pay a ten thousand dollar a month customer charge for the administrative part of us having to bill differently and to take them on and off. The other part of it is they will be given an energy pass-through, but only down to a dollar fifty a megawatt, and I say that because in the wintertime, it goes negative, and all that negative pricing will get rolled back into our customer base. We've actually taken a theoretical run of this complex and put it in last year's PCA, and it could realize up to a thirty percent decrease for everybody's PCA, the fuel cost adder, and everybody's bill by lowering the rate. Now, you're right about them eating up infrastructure, and that's what we've been very careful of. We've been very clear, this is capped at this, there will be no expansion, there will be no other locations in town. This is a one-off because we have a depreciating asset, and actually, the ten megawatts of solar are on two feeders. Those two feeders will actually be what tie into this facility. So technically, the transformer in the substation won't even see that load on certain days. It will come right out of the substation and go right into that facility. So this is just a unique situation, and although I agree with everything you're saying, which is why it's seven years in the making, this is a rare circumstance, I'll say.
I guess I got to go to the microphone. But the, you know, in this era, age of green energy, we got the solar panels and this and that, you know, a little bit higher rate might make them become more efficient in their use, and that's, that's a part of it, that's part of it too. Thank you. Thank you.
And, and I will add that this agreement that will be signed does not exclude them from being subject to adjustments on future rates like everybody else. So any other questions?
Mr. Nickerson has a motion.
Make a motion that we approve. Let me get my spectacles on here. Twenty twenty-five dash two nine nine.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you, I'll second.
Mr. Brown, discussion?
I appreciate all the hard work that you did to figure all this out and, and out of the whole area of Grand Island, that this is the only place that we can put this. And you did a lot of hard work, and I appreciate you, and the, the money will come back to Grand Island and the citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
I think what I'm really after, and this is all Greek to me, which is why I ask you to share it with us tonight, because let's, let's talk about the type of business, because we're talking about this business. So elaborate on the type of business going in here, what their purpose is, and how this all ties together.
My understanding is it will be a typical, what you hear of the Bitcoin or the load center, they, they have the ability to switch over and do computing capabilities on different realms, but primarily probably Bitcoin-type activities is what would be involved. I mean, they, I think they would employ just a couple people. I mean, that's very typical of these things. All the concerns that Jerry listed is correct, and if we couldn't set this up in a way that was financially viable for the city of Grand Island without any skin in the game on our part, then we wouldn't do it. So it's not, it's not a boon by number of jobs. That's not going to be the case. They, there are many rural electrics that have these that vary in sizes across the state. They are financially good for those utilities, in our case, beyond what we've discussed already. My personal opinion is you do not want to get too much vested to the point where if the business goes away, it has such a swing on your rates from losing it, so you're so heavily slanted in that area. We've talked to Next Era, who's our marketing agent with SPP. We've walked through this with them. We've had, I want to say there's six, seven people internal to the utilities that we've had along this process the whole way, so we wanted everybody's input back and forth. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's a business boon, because as far as jobs or anything like that, but it's a financial, very viable financial option for the city.
Well, I am cryptocurrency ignorant and plan to stay that way, because I have no reason to, to get into it. I'll let all the rest of you play with that. But we're, we're talking about high consumptions of energy in these things. I still don't even have a concept how the thing works. I like to see my money in my hand, not wherever it is. But you're talking about trying to tie it in with the solar panels and to primarily feed them as much as possible, but is anybody going to be starved because of that solar panel energy going away to these folks? Is anybody else going to be starved for energy needs? Because we put those solar panels there for a reason to start with.
Physically, that's how it will work. Financially, all our power technically goes out to the market, and we buy back what we need. So it really doesn't, financially, it's not going from A to B, but physically it is. I guess I say that just from the point that it doesn't put any new stresses on our substation transformer, because we're not transforming that power coming in from elsewhere. It's, it's right there.
Okay. Well, and I agree with Doug. I mean, a lot of research, you, you, once again, you're guarding the things that are important to you and to us, and I appreciate that. Again, have no clue about the business or the success or failure of such a business, but it sounds like it will be in a place where it's, it's relatively isolated from residential people, and it's in kind of a commercial area, so that seems to fit. Now, the footprint that you showed, does the business take the majority of that footprint, or is there's, is a small part of it?
The footprint will be two-thirds of an acre, and that will allow for the equipment, such as transformers, reclosers, the building, and the wall. And so for that eighteen thousand dollars a year, we will have a three percent adder per year. It's a twenty, up to a twenty-year lease, and then that adder will go to four percent after ten years and five percent after five years. And at any point, if they quit paying, the building becomes Grand Island's. So we, we can inherit the building, we can make them tear it down, we can do whatever we want. They will also be funding the full capital involved in the infrastructure to connect to us. So really, if they walk away tomorrow, we're no worse off.
Right. So in the research that you've done, what has the longevity of these type of businesses been? Are they still going wherever they were planted?
They, they, and I, I'm not in that business, but my understanding is they expect it to go on that long. And again, if, if, if it doesn't, the way I look at it is we've, we're no worse off. We wanted to do this as a lease because we didn't want to give up the rights to the land. So the land would come back to us, the building would be ours to do with as we see fit. We're not really out anything on capital. So that, the big thing is I did not want anything that would, the customer base would have to subsidize. We were very careful at structuring this. And when we've had these conversations and you have these entities come in and they're kind of like, well, can you do this? That's how you know you're close, right? You're at their break-even threshold, and you don't want them to come and just be rushing in, but you don't, you know? So that's how you know you've got your rate set about where you want. So I feel like we're protecting the customer base here, and, and we just will, there's verifications in there that they have to show with a, a certified technician on the sound, which will be the big thing we're going to hawk. So, and, and the nice thing is, most of these are containers. This will be a building, which I, was the option they offered, and it looks very aesthetic.
Okay, well, thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, you and I have talked about this just briefly not too long ago, and I understand, I, I think appreciate Mr. Paul's point. The residential rate class pays a higher rate than commercial, and pays a higher rate than industrial. That's just the fact, whether they come or go, that's just the cost of the service. The only way this makes in- The only way this makes any sense for the ratepayers and the citizens of Grand Island is if there's some part that would credit back through the PCA, something back towards every residential, and that's why I support this, and I support it because I think this is, this is part of the future. You know, electricity is gonna be a big thing. It is a big thing, and it has been for 100 years. It's gonna be an even bigger thing in the future, particularly for these types of applications. Um, I think we need to get in the game. I think this is a great way to do it, and I think there's some payback for citizens to support this as well. So thank you, Ryan, for bringing it forward.
Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I, I know you kinda talked about the noise and putting like the, the wall up as well, and there's some housing up to the north. Do you know about what the decibel level would be for the closest housing out there?
Our threshold's 50.
50, okay.
And I can tell you the ambient out there is higher than 50. So, uh, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. Everything we've measured off the existing building shows that, everything, they, they seem very comfortable. Their, their biggest concern was being held to bring ambient down, and you can't bring ambient down, but...
Sounds like there's been a lot of due diligence in the noise then, so...
As, as much as possible. Nothing's foolproof, but as much as could be realistically done.
And I've seen a lot of these crypto coin, uh, cryptocurrency mining type of facilities, they're basically just packed full of computers, uh, but no, I appreciate the, the due diligence you've done in that as well, and thanks for sharing.
Motion adopted.
Avenue approving engineering services for Burdick Station Generation Project. Mr. Schmitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the first step going down the road of building out new generation that we talked about a few months back. It was bid out, we had four qualified bidders. The one that we're bringing forward tonight not only was the most value, but also one of the leaders in the industry, which is Burns and Mack. The first step in this process would be to analyze the type of generators that best fit Grand Island, and then upon selecting those, um, putting those into the SPP portal, the portal, so analysis phase, to, to get the approval to build them out. So in each step in this contract, it, there's also steps in the contract for the design build, and then to help with the procurement of the generation and then overseeing the construction. So what we're approving tonight is the analysis part of the type of generators and putting, um, it into the SPP process, along with approving their qualifications, so that we can bring forward those further steps later.
Harold Poles, do you want to speak on this?
Thank you again. I, my question was, in reading through the packet, they're talking about, uh, looking at $100 million within five years for 35 to 40 megawatts. And I, what I did is I kind of tied that into the data center usage, and, and then, of course, I'm gonna get into Woodsonia's housing project, and all these housing projects that we have going on that aren't contributing, uh, property taxes to these, these types of endeavors. And, and, and so that was my question, is what, where are we going to get that $100 million in the next five years? And, uh, I mean, what's, what's the plan? Because I'm sure the power, the, the generation station will be built, but I just wondered if, if there is a plan going forward as to, are we gonna be bonding this and then paying more in debt service, you know? So, but that was my question, is like, if, if we're using this, we're going, $100 million is what's shown in the packet in the next five years. So got an idea of where that's gonna come from, because we also need, we got public schools that are gonna be, needing to be rebuilt, that'll be another 200 million. So we got a lot of expenses coming up, and I just kind of want to know where that's money, if you foresee the, uh, where that money's coming from. So, thank you.
I'll speak a little bit to that. What we hope to bring forward is options. We brought, in the study session, we talked about 2040. To fully build out that site would actually be 60. We can bring all three options. Part of that funding, um, we will, we pay $4 million towards our debt service right now, and that will expire in 2028 prior to this going in, so that money, the intent would be to repurpose that. In addition to that, you know, it would be up to discretion at that time, how aggressive we want to get with our crystal ball. And I'll paint the picture, and it'll, you know, bring it to you guys to let me know your thoughts, but this will be just getting the consultant on board to start that process.
Thank you. Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-302.
Mr. O'Neil?
I'll second that motion.
Question, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I was just kind of amazed, uh, when we talked before about the lead time of some of these generators, that, uh, when you order them, it could take five to six years to get them. You know, that's, you gotta think way in the future to, to be able to think like that and, and start the process.
Correct. Some, yeah, the, the generator, depending on which size we pick, the other one that's got a long lead time is the transformer for the step-up in the substation. Those have a, a notable lead time as well. So our, our tent all along has been that 2031 timeline, and so it's what we're shooting for, and we'll see how the timeline plays out, but this is the first step. Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to point out to the council that the last time this council approved a $100 million power plant, it was called Platt Generating Station, south of town. In 1977, we built the power plant, and it was a $100 million project at that time. It, that $100 million was paid off in 1999, and that thing is still working today. 26 years later, we have been able to produce power at Platt Generating Station without any debt service on that piece. Now, our power demands have grown since then, you know, but I want to talk about the last time we spent $100 million. We did pay it off in 20 years, and it's been a blessing, absolute blessing, to the people of the city of Grand Island through their lower utility rates, not only for that 20-year period, but also in the 25 years since then. So it was a great decision at that point, and I think this one is gonna be equally as good, or should be as good.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We'll now take up our public hearings. 8A, public hearing on acquisition of public right-of-way and permanent easement for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, Project Number 2021-P-6, Garcia and STSM LLC. Mr. Kurtz?
Good evening. Uh, so this is, uh, permanent and temporary, or, excuse me, permanent easement and right-of-way acquisitions for the South Locust Street project. Again, a couple more. Hopefully, we're done sooner than later on this, so, uh, we can continue on, but, uh, just another, uh, acquisition on the project.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-305.
Mr. Brown?
Second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8B, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 1810 Union Road, AOM Machining LLC. Your backup, Mr. Schmitz?
This is for a service at AOM Machining. Um, it's, uh, I believe it's a, I was just gonna give the width for you, but it's a 300 KVA transformer.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 2025-T306.
And Mr. Sheard?
Thank you, I'll second that.
Question?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolutions 9A approving RFP contract for public baseball entertainment at Ryder Park Legion Field. Mr. McCoy, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Council is aware that we've talked about the renovation of, and we have plans in place for the renovation of the Ryder Park baseball field. Tonight, I'm excited to announce, um, another opportunity for Ryder Park and the community. We're recommending an agreement with National Sports Service, um, to bring Diamond League Baseball to Grand Island. So they are, their proposal is to provide about 60, they'll have about 60 games, about 30 games in Grand Island. They'll start the end of May, they'll use the Ryder Park facility, they'll be done by the end of July. The plan is for them to start in 2026. They are proposing to invest, um, $250,000 into the facility. And to talk more about it, I would like to invite, with the mayor's permission, Matt Perry with, uh, National Sports Services to talk about Diamond League Baseball.
Certainly. Please state your name, sir.
Matt Perry. I'm excited to be here. Uh, we, there's been a lot of work that's gone into getting to today. Uh, a little bit about myself and, and my company. I am a true Husker. I grew up in Holdridge. Came here and, and to Grand Island and played against the Legion when I was playing Legion ball back in the day. My company, again, is National Sports Services. I have a partner that's based in Chattanooga, Tennessee. For 40 years, we've been in the business of owning and operating sports teams, and it's principally been in minor league baseball, um, all levels of affiliated baseball, triple-A, double-A, single-A, um, independent professional baseball, and summer collegiate baseball. So we've been, uh, really, I, I call people, I, I tell people that we're kind of mutts in the business, because we've done the ownership, the operation, we've developed stadium projects, we've opened and operated stadiums, we sold naming rights, and, but, so this is the space we live in. We're not hobbyists, if you will. Uh, we've also done a lot of hockey. We've owned minor league, professional hockey teams, um, junior hockey teams. So, uh, sports is kind of it for, for us, for our business, and most of it's been coast to coast. So I've spent most of my career going to airports, getting planes, going somewhere, get a rental car, staying in hotels. Uh, one of the beautiful things about developing the Diamond Baseball League is that it's, the core of it's based in Kansas, Nebraska, Missouri, as we started out with six teams. Um, so for me, I really like the idea that I can get in a car and I can get to where I'm going. I, I live in Lawrence, Kansas, right now, so I'm kind of in the, in the hub of, of the geography of the league. So it's, it's, I'm really excited about that as well. So, you know, so we're gonna, uh, we'll own all the teams, at least initially. It's something we've learned, I guess, from the industry, that doing this and starting a new league, if we own all the teams, we get a control how they're operated, putting in our systems, hire and train the people we want to train, make sure that it's done right, make sure that it's properly capitalized. You know, all critical things, because when we do this, we're not dipping our toe in the water, we want to be here long-term, and that's the kind of relationship we want to develop here. Uh, one of the things, too, that, um, when you look at people we partner, partner with to do this, to, again, do things right, uh, one of our founding partners is a guy by the name of Ralph Nelson. Ralph is, has 25 years of background with Major League Baseball as an executive with the Giants and the Diamondbacks. He's worked in the Major League Commissioner's office. So, you know, really, quality individual that's gonna, uh, that has great contacts in the industry, that's gonna just help us going forward. Many of you maybe know Scott Galusha back here. Scott has been, uh, an operator, an owner with the, the team in Hastings, and we've gotten to know him through our efforts of, of building this league. He's gonna do some consulting for us with the operation here in Grand Island, uh, so we're excited to have him, uh, you know, as part of our team going forward, if you will. When, when we got the RFP and we responded to it, um, one of the things we wanted to send a message to you and to the community is that we're willing to invest in what it is you're doing with Ryder Park. Tremendously excited about what's going on there, uh, what the plans are to, to renovate out there, but we felt that we needed to step up and be a part of that, and so part of this lease agreement, yes, includes us investing $250,000, um, to be a part of making that what it, what it can be. One of the other things we did early on, in, in looking at the RFP and understanding the users of the facility and the history of the facility, uh, before we even responded to the RFP, we went and met with the folks with the American Legion, because it was very obvious to us early on that they're, they're an important user, they have great history here, um, and they're doing a lot to help make that renovation happen. So we met with Kirby and Clint and Monty and some of the other folks there, and, and wanted to understand what their needs are, what's important to them, to make sure that we have, that we're a great partner, a great partner with the city, a great partner with them, and in using the facility, figuring out scheduling, figuring out how we do sponsorships, food and beverage, all that. And, um, you know, I, I feel good that I can say, I think, I think we're off on the right foot in, in developing that relationship. You can expect us to operate this, it, it's summer collegiate baseball, so these kids are college age, and they'll come mainly regionally, they'll be from schools in the area, but we'll have some kids that may come from California, may come from New York or Florida, uh, whatever the case may be. And they'll be here during the summer, they'll stay with host families, uh, so we'll develop those host family relationships, and, uh, it'll, it'll be neat to see them advance their careers, and hopefully, you know, some of them will end up playing Major League Baseball, uh, eventually. So we get to be a part of that whole process. We'll hire a full-time staff of, of people that live here and work, uh, in the community, community year-round. One of the things that's really important to us is, uh, we want to put a good product on the field and have it be competitive. At the same time, we'd like to be known as good corporate and community citizens by having programs in the school systems and reading programs and, and, and helping kids to stay off drugs and, you know, anything we can do, fundraisers for, um, needy groups, um, youth organizations. We want that to also be a staple of what we, how we're seen by the community. So that, that, too, is very important to us. We will very shortly be, um, making a public announcement that the team's coming here, provided that we, we get the nod to move forward with you. Um, and that will include a name the team contest, so the public will be able to get involved in selecting the name of the team here, which is, you know, one of the funnest parts about this, is creating this brand for something that's gonna be Grand Island's team. The, the makeup of the league, so we'll have three teams in Nebraska, two teams in Missouri, one in Kansas, to start. We've already been working on expansion opportunities to grow the league, and, um, we are very bullish on our background, our contacts, the way we've set this up, and that we're gonna do things that were gonna be one of the premier summer collegiate leagues in America, and I, you know, and, and Grand Island's gonna be one of our mainstay inaugural franchises, you know, as we, as we make that happen. So thanks for all the work you've done to, to get to this point, and, you know, we're excited about the opportunity to move forward with you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we approve 2025-307.
Mr. Brown?
Second that motion.
Question, Mr. Hawsey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who to direct them to, but the first one is, is under Section 6 of the agreement, the city is responsible for the maintenance and repairs of the facility? I mean, is that a, is that normal, Todd?
Yes, we do currently. That's, that's how we operate with the high school baseball team and the Legion team currently today.
Okay, and then so, in section three, the team refers to the, the league, operates the food and beverage for all events held at Ryder Park? So it doesn't matter who's at Ryder Park, they then have the, because that, that's a revenue source to do a food and beverage at any event. So they're going to be compensated through the food and beverage, but not only for their baseball team, but any other thing that goes on in Ryder Park?
So I'll tell you what we currently do, and then maybe what I'll do is get Matt up here because he's, has some plans in place and has had some of those conversations already with the Legion folks. Right now, we don't operate, the city does not, does not operate the concession stand, so the, the Legion and the school just are, we give them the, the concession rights, and then they can use it as a fundraiser or whatever. So, so they would operate their normal concessions, and then, like I said, they would collect all the revenue and be responsible for it. And I, and I think Matt has worked out some, some plans in place, and I, I think there's some future agreements coming, and maybe I'll let Matt just kind of respond to that.
Yeah, because I just want to know, are we stepping on anybody's toes to other people who in the community might operate the concessions and, and use those funds for other purposes that, that are benefit the community? Those are the two things that, when I look at one side, the city's doing the maintenance and repairs, the other side is we get no revenue on anything, nor does anybody else in the community do, you know? And so, I'm just kind of curious how that overlaps with the existing community operations of the facility.
No, good question. And so, what we talked to the Legion folks about was that it's harder and harder for them to get volunteers to operate the concessions for their events. So we, what we proposed was, well, let us just do it, because we're going to have to hire people for our events, we're going to know how the equipment works, and we're going to, we may be investing in that as part of our deal. And we have a lot of experience operating food and beverage in other facilities. So the premise would be that, look, tell us how much you made historically, and, you know, we'll either at least guarantee that so that you don't lose money from this relationship, and then have some sort of, on top of that way to make even more money. Or we'll just give you, you know, the lion's share of the net income that comes from us operating it. And maybe we take, I don't know, five percent or ten percent to cover overhead or something, but the whole concept is, to your point, our presence shouldn't be a money-losing situation for the other users. Hopefully, it's additive, and that's how we're approaching it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, Todd, I need you to educate me here. I don't know a heck of a lot about what goes on at Ryder Park on any given season. My kids never grew up to play at that level. They played a lot of the entry-level stuff for years, but what is the current, how does Ryder Park currently function, the teams that play there, how does this mesh with that? Does it replace what's going on? Is it all of the above? Just help me understand what goes on out there.
So currently today, before this agreement, there was just two groups. There was the high school baseball program and the Legion baseball program. So the high school baseball program would start in March, they would practice there, have their home games there, and then they would conclude in the middle of May, and then at the end of May, the Legion program would start. So with the, the new baseball league that we're talking about today, proposing today, they would overlap, they would not overlap the high school at all, but they would overlap the Legion. And that's why it was important that Matt made those connections with the Legion folks so that, like I said, to, to make sure that would work. And so, and I've talked to the Legion folks as well, and they're all comfortable with it. I know Scott's here, they, they do the, the same thing in Hastings. The Legion uses Duncan Field and the, the sod buster uses Duncan Field as well. So they're, they're both using the same field.
Is this primarily weekend play or through the week, or how's that all work on that?
I'll let Matt explain. Well, as far as the Legion, as the Legion goes, they will play on the weekends and the weekdays, so they'll play a little bit of both. But it's not every day. It's, I want to say, you know, every, you know, other weekend, they would be off type of a thing.
Yes, it'll also be kind of a mixed bag, too. Just generally speaking, in that time period where we have games from the end of May through the first week of August, we might be at home half of those weekends, just generally speaking, then on the road, the rest of them. And then the Legion would be, when we're on the road, you know, they would be having their tournaments or games, whatever the case may be. And same thing during the week. We'll, we'll have some weekday games, Legion will have some weekday games. And so, one of the things that was important to us early on in meeting with them was just sitting down and talking about the schedule. You know, can we make this work? And Kirby, who, who does the scheduling, you know, after we talked through it, he said, yeah, I think we can, we can make this work and we can be good partners in using the facility.
Who's going to control that schedule, do you think? Who's going to be the master of the schedule? Todd will be that guy?
We'll still, we'll still be the, we'll still be the master scheduler.
Okay. I still have more questions for Matt, so before we got away there. Again, trying to understand your, your six teams that you'll have playing, it sounds like. They play in the evenings, afternoons, what?
Evenings.
It's going to be evening games?
Yeah, approximately seven o'clock, and the games generally last, on average, you're going to say, two and a half hours.
Okay. And I'm going to guess that National Sports Services isn't an entity just for the fun of it. So I'm just trying to figure out what pays the bills.
So we make our, we generate revenues through the following sources: tickets, concessions, and sponsorships. And if you were to lay a blanket over it, you'd say it's a third, a third, a third. You know, varies by every market a little bit. We make a little bit from merchandise sales, but not a lot. So those are our primary revenue generators. And then our expenses are our leases, our, our staff, our, our in-game, our, our in-season labor, marketing and branding, insurance, you know, basic infrastructure overhead. And, and hopefully, you know, we're able to set that up in a way that we can run a profitable, profitable business, and as much as anything, create opportunities also to dump more money back into the business to keep growing it. And one thing we like about, you know, getting into the weeds a little bit, but understanding a little bit more about the summer collegiate business, one thing we like about it is we're helping young players develop, but we don't pay them. And so we don't have heavy player development costs, which allows us to put our focus in other areas from an expense standpoint. But we can still operate it like a minor league experience with the promotions and the in-game fun and, and really making sure people have a great time.
So because of the higher skill level that goes with age typically, is that what's going to be the draw for the baseball games, to see those people playing at that level?
You know, what's interesting is what we've found over the years is we're in the entertainment business, and there just happens to be a baseball game going on. So when we look at the pie of people that will come out to these events from not only Grand Island but around the area, the, we look at this big pie of, who are people that want to be entertained or come out and have fun? And the pie's this big. And then you look at, well, how many people are really the hardcore baseball fans that really know the players and this little sliver right here? And we still want to cater to them, but our focus is really on the, to make it work as a business is this big pie.
Okay, so as far as the entertainment, there're going to be some promotional things to get people engaged, and whether you're shooting hot dogs at people or whatever it is, you know, shoot t-shirts or whatever. So it sounds like, yes, I think you hit it with the entertainment aspect, I can understand that. I don't know the seating capacity at Ryder Park. Apparently, it must be adequate enough that you feel you can generate enough ticket sales and fill the seats?
It, it is. It's a good size because I think we'll have a rugged opportunity to have sellouts and really create the demand for the product. But we'll also likely add some things like picnic group areas, which gives you a lot of flex space to maybe put in another 200, 250 people.
Okay. Then lastly here, I am curious about your thoughts of Ryder Park as a whole, and you already inferred earlier that you kind of know what we're, where we're trying to head with that. What's your overall feeling and what do you see the $250,000 going toward? That project or additional upgrades that you're seeing that are important?
Well, my overall take is that it's in a really cool setting, in the park itself. You know, when I see the plans to renovate it, I, I get incredibly excited because when we look at the opportunity to market to have people come out to an event, part of that's going to be, I want to come out and see what's happening with this stadium that I've known for all these years, and now, you know, I hear about what it's going to be, and I want to see that. So we're able to also benefit from, and piggyback off of that excitement that's going on. You know, one of the key elements in, in having discussions with the Legion and with the, with Todd and his folks about scheduling and making the scheduling work is the artificial turf, which gives you really that opportunity to make that work. Very hard to have the level of play on a natural grass surface that would include us and the Legion, and it's just too difficult to work around weather issues and turnover and all that. So having the artificial turf is going to, I, I mean, it's, I would say it's essential, you know, to make it work for all the users, but the city's going to see that much more use and that much more benefit from making that investment.
I'm not sure I heard, maybe you touched on it, I just wasn't listening. Where did you see your $250,000 going toward?
Yeah, good question. We're working on that. We're, we're figuring that out with the city. There's a lot of things that need to be considered on where that should best be applied, and so we didn't think we were quite ready to say this is absolutely where it should go for this meeting, but we'll have conversations here, you know, after this and figure out where's, where's the best use of those funds for the product. We're, we're pretty flexible from our standpoint, in terms of what that is.
And that's fair enough, and I, I guess that level of commitment on your part speaks highly, that you're that interested in Ryder Park and making this thing a go. So that's what impresses me. And just had a lot of questions, I think you've answered most of them, so thank you.
Well, thanks. And, and that excitement goes beyond Ryder Park, it's the community. We see just a tremendous opportunity to, to create a really cool asset for, for this market. And so we really just like Grand Island. You know, I hadn't spent a lot of time here before, I've been through the town, but it just comes off as clean, progressive, there's a lot going on here, and we're, we're just excited about, you know, the opportunity to be here.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Line B, approval of LB-840 grant for business blueprint workshop. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, and it's a little bit of background on this agenda item, is in 2024, 2024, Grand Island was awarded the National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Rapid Grant of $20,000. The funding laid the foundation for the innovative pilot program designed to empower aspiring entrepreneurs living at or below 200% of the federal poverty level. In partnership with the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, Central Community College Entrepreneurial Center, the city launched the Grand Island Community Kitchen Pilot Program and targeted entrepreneurs in the cottage food industry, providing them with business knowledge, financial resources needed to grow their small businesses. Upon successful completion of four weeks of programming through Central Community College on business structures and support, business insurance and financial planning, effective marketing strategies for small businesses, and in Nebraska cottage food laws. Each of the ten participants received micro grants of $2,000 that were spent to implement specific business plans, examples of investments, including development of marketing materials, equipment purchases, renting commercial kitchen space, and purchase of raw material to expand production capacity. Based on the tremendous success of the Community Kitchen Pilot Program, the city, Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, and Central Community College Entrepreneurial Center wished to continue their partnership and expand the business and development workshop model to high-wage, high-skill, high-demand, H3 industries. Many successful, many successful completion of a six-week workshop, participants will be eligible for a $3,000 LB-840 grant to be used towards equipment, software, marketing, business rent, professional services, et cetera. A detailed plan for the weekly instruction modules is included in the LB-840 application found in your agenda packet. Tonight, we also have Mary Burley here and someone else. Sorry. And they have a presentation on this program.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, and presenting on the Grand Island Business Blueprint Workshop. This is a brand-new program, but I wanted to give you a little context before we dive really far, really far into, oh, that's a little goofy. Not quite. Okay, we're just getting, we missed a slide there. I wanted to give you a little context before we dive into this business blueprint. We know that when entrepreneurs are supported, it creates a community culture of innovation. It helps people realize and visualize a path to their dreams and their, their ideas, but it also creates a connection to that community. And so, this is one more layer of entrepreneurial and business support that Grand, that we're asking Grand Island to support. The slide that is not on there was the fourth Big Idea Grand Island Pitch Contest. This is a program that Economic Development Corporation and Central Community College Entrepreneurship Center with Amy Steinhardt, Steinhardt Dyson is with me today. This is a program that we have put together, it's similar to ABC Shark Tank. And so, we collect and go out for RFPs of businesses. Last year, we collected thirty business ideas, we drilled them down to the top ten. Those top ten individuals pitched their business in front of a live audience for two minutes. They then had a panel of judges that did a little Q and A back and forth for another two minutes, and then the audience asked questions for one minute. After all ten entrepreneurs pitched their business in that two-minute timeframe, then the audience chose the top five and the judges chose the top three. First-place prize wins $10,000 cash in order to put money towards their new business. Second place wins $2,000, third place wins $500. And so this next slide will help articulate what a little bit of that support, from a programming standpoint, from an entrepreneurial standpoint, what that little bit of support does to that individual and that business. If we have sound? Do we have sound? Darn, doesn't sound like it. So this is Melissa with Deli Boards. And you can see there, she is in that black jacket with white t-shirt, holding another contestant's hand. She is announced as the winner. She comes up here in front of a live audience, and there are probably 350 people up here. Melissa is not originally from the country, nor is she from Grand Island. But her speech, and hopefully we will send this to you because it's pretty heartwarming, her speech says that she's not from Grand Island, but she is today, and Grand Island is her home because she's had folks invest in her, and she will continue to invest in Grand Island because of Big Idea and because of the support. So this is Melissa with Deli Boards, and this is just one example of the ROI, tiny bit of, of ROI when we support those entrepreneurs and those dreamers. Like Patrick mentioned, in 2024, the city of Grand Island received a $20,000 grant from the National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Rapid Grant Program. Upon the receipt of that $20,000, the city of Grand Island engaged the Economic Development Corporation and Central Community College Entrepreneurship Center and said, what the heck are we going to do with this $20,000 and this rapid economic mobility grant? We came together and we identified that we were going to put together a Grand Island Community Kitchen Pilot Program. Community Kitchen Pilot Program. This pilot program was going to target cottage industries. These cottage industries are individuals who manufacture food-grade products in their home or commercial kitchen for retail consumption. That's cottage industry. So they produce these food-grade products in their home and then sell it to a retailer. We did have some stipulations attached to this $20,000 with the National League of Cities. Those participants had to be 200% under, at or below the poverty line from the federal standpoint, but we really wanted to engage a different, a different population than what we've been able to engage in the past. And so we opened up the RFP to the community for two weeks and we had 11 RFPs come through or requests to participate. We drilled that down to the top nine. Those top nine individuals then went through a very rigorous, I'll say, four-week business boot camp. Now, we did not teach the cottage industry. We did not teach how to bake cupcakes or cook tamales or manufacture the candies. What we did was we helped foster those very basic fundamentals and very basic skills to grow their business, whether it's from the legal standpoint or marketing or accounting, scheduling their appointments. These are all of the individuals that were able to participate in our pilot program. Many of these individuals and their businesses can be found at the farmer's market on Saturday morning now at Bosseman Enterprise, and so that is quite the success for us. But after the completion of the four-week business boot camp in which we had 100% participation at 100% of those workshops, we distributed $2,000 to each participant as a grant. So City of Grand Island Economic Development Corporation and Central Community College, we did not keep that $20,000. We then distributed it back out to those participants. Those participants used that $2,000 grant to purchase a generator for their food truck. They paid an electrician to install a new 220 amp service in their home and expand the number of ovens that they have. They used that $2,000 to purchase inventory and equipment to expand their home bakery, and then they also utilized the funds for logo and marketing materials and some social Grand Island's project was really, really cool. We'll toot our own horn a little bit on that. And because of that success and the positive impact that we had on that shoestring budget, city administrator Laura McAlune and I traveled to Texas this last year to present Grand Island's project to the National League of Cities and our other cohort members. Laura went on to present in Washington DC to additional National League of Cities, and then I will travel to Chicago later next month to continue to talk about Grand Island's project and how we were able to impact with just a tiny bit of incentive funding and a tiny bit of carrots that we were dangling and what impact we were able to have. All of this travel, I should mention, was also paid from the National League of Cities. So this was no, there was no fiscal impact to our organizations to promote Grand Island and the positive impacts that we've had. Now, as we drill into the Grand Island Business Blueprint, we would like to take the model of the Community Kitchen Pilot Program and make it bigger, better, and more impactful. We would like the next phase of this economic mobility grant for entrepreneurs to target the H3, is what we call them, the H3 folks, that are skilled trades as defined by occupations that require specialized skill, knowledge, ability which can be obtained by a college technical skill or through that specialized training. What that means is folks that are in the manufacturing, technology, welding, machinist, mechanics, tool and die, programmers, electricians, plumbers, gas fitters, carpenters, bricklayers, insulators, construction technicians, HVAC, drywallers, concrete finishers, landscapes, and the list goes on and on. Again, we will not be teaching this trade, but rather, we are going to be walking these individuals in that H3 industry through the business basics of starting and upskilling and making their business more efficient. This will allow us to continue to diversify our economic base as well as increase our residents' economic mobility. This is a rough outline of our six-week course that all participants will need to successfully complete. We are proposing three workshops hosted in the fall of 2025, the spring of 2026, and the fall of 2026. That slide should reflect fall of 2026. We are requesting 30 participants actively participate in those three workshops, so roughly 10 individuals per workshop. We're requesting that instead of the $2,000 grant after successful completion, that we grant $3,000 per participant after that successful completion, because we may have more expensive equipment, we may have more expensive scheduling and insurance needs for those businesses and so forth. We're also requesting $15,000 for administrative expenses. This could include expert speaker fees, travel fees, room rentals, bottled water, anything like that. So this program in whole is over a year and a half, impacting 30 individuals over that year and a half, and we're requesting $105,000 over that one and a half-year timeline. As of last week, the LB-840 had a balance of 1 point, nearly 1.5 million. We've done five LB-840 applications and projects in 2025. That's the large, the most amount of LB-840 projects that we've ever done in a single year. So when we look at all of those projects and if the business blueprint is approved tonight, that LB-840 balance will come in at $443,880. So with that, we would kindly request, and open for questions, but we would request the approval, that says 150, 105,000 for 30 entrepreneurs to participate in the business blueprint workshop over the course of a year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawsey?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-308.
Mr. Brown?
I'd second that motion.
Mr. Nickerson?
Thank you, Mary, for sharing that with us tonight. Sounds like a very successful program to date. I do have a few questions for you, though. First of all, help some of us understand what H3 stands for.
Sure. So H3 is the high skill, high wage, high demand.
That's the H is high skill, high wage, high demand. Okay. All right. Easily explained. And then you've already marketed this to your previous group. How do you, now you're looking for 30 participants, how do you market that to let people know it's available?
Yeah, so we'll definitely leverage our viewing tonight, but also we'll send out press releases. We have a very deep network at the Economic Development Corporation, at the Chamber of Commerce. The city of Grand Island has a deep network with our building department, as well as Central Community College Entrepreneurship Center and the college as a whole and their network.
Okay. And if I understand this correctly, using the same model you used on people that are, you know, making cookies, tamales, kolaches, whatever it is, you're saying, let's take this to the next level, the trade level, and now you want to start a business. And so we're going to help you, we're going to educate you, and some of them may be running a business, you may teach them how to run it better, things that people don't realize when they get into it, and it's just a way to improve their educational process. So that's really where you're heading with it this time, then?
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, the presentations that you made to the different city leagues around the country, what kind of feedback have you had from your little presentations that you've done?
We've had phenomenal feedback. We're not alone in not having commercial kitchen space. We're not alone in some of our holes that we have in entrepreneurial support, but it's so encouraging, so engaging that we get to tell our success stories, but we also get to learn from those folks, too. And we bring that knowledge back and flip it. How do we make our community much more progressive and much more the easy button for businesses, whether they're existing or startups?
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. Mary, I could sit here and tell you all the things I've told you for the last 10 years about how awesome I think your dreams are for helping entrepreneurs and kids and young business owners start here in Grand Island. But you already know how I feel about all that stuff, so I'm just going to say it to the microphone. Mary has been doing amazing things and she has these dreams and these ideas, and it's so awesome to see the successes that you've been able to do. You've been telling me some of these ideas, back to my GIPS days, that you had these dreams to get kids and young adults to invest themselves in Grand Island. And to see these types of things, $105,000, yeah, like the success you had out of the first one and these big ideas, I just am so impressed with the things you continue to do and you back it up by finding ways to connect people to futures in Grand Island. So I got nothing else, I just want to say thank you. You're awesome.
Very kind, and I certainly can't take credit for all, any or all of that. Laura McAlune has been a huge, huge cheerleader and a huge driver in all this, as well as Amy Steinhardt-Dyson at Central Community College and our partnerships there. So thank you for your kind words.
Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a wonderful program and I'm glad to support it. I think attracting the young people to expand these needed businesses is just a wonderful, proactive approach to building a community. You know, I used to volunteer for SCORE and I can tell you a lot of startup businesses needed help, and that's what we did in SCORE. This isn't just another extension of that type of attitude towards helping young entrepreneurs. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Oh, sorry.
Now, if I can just indulge, I'd just add on to Jack and to Chuck what they said. I was actually a judge at the Big Idea. What a fun time that was. And they filled the leader grants, and the energy that they brought was incredible. So Mary is doing a great job, I just wanted to add that in.
Okay. Please vote. Motion adopted.
9C, approving contract amendment two with Highway 281 Woodsonia LLC for Conestoga Marketplace. Mr. Nabody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I can take a quick aside and just throw in that of the number of people that passed the first of those entrepreneurship courses, if you do go, like Mary said, if you go to the farmer's market at Bosseman's, there are three or four of them that are there every single week. And it's a, it's a wonderful way to just get things started. But beyond that, I'll go into what I actually came up here to talk about. What you have before you is the second contract amendment with Woodsonia Highway 281 for the Conestoga Marketplace contract. The normally, as you know, contracts for tax increment financing are done between the CRA and the entity. In this case, we did this one as a three-way contract between the city of Grand Island because you granted funds through the CRA to that project and to, and so it's between the CRA, Woodsonia, and the city of Grand Island. To amend that contract, because we had three parties involved in it, it takes all three parties amending that contract. The amendment before you this evening does not increase the amount of TIF, does not increase the amount of occupation tax that would be collected and could be remitted. So it doesn't change any of those numbers. All it does is allow the bonds, because we will issue multiple bonds for the TIF and multiple bonds for the EEA that can run, the TIF bonds can run up to 20 years, and depending on when the phases of the project get done, that will start then right after that. What this does is allows the developer, Woodsonia, to redirect those funds that if one bond pays off a little bit early, those funds can cascade over into another bond. Does not increase the amount that was committed to them, it just makes it very clear that all of that is available to them.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody. Mr. O'Neill?
I move that we approve 2025-309.
Mr. Hawsey?
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
9D, approving fiscal year 2025 to 2026 annual budget for South Locust Business Improvement District and setting board of equal, and setting date for board of equalization. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the South Locust Business Improvement District. They have set a budget at $180,010, but special assessments are, they're asking special assessments to be at $104,617. They're looking to spend down some of the cash reserves that they have in their account, and we're asking council to set as a board of equalization on October 14th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. O'Neill?
I move that we approve 2025-310.
Mr. Pollak? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
9E, approving setting the board, approving setting the date for board of equalization for parking district number three, off-street parking. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for the downtown parking district. The square footage of the parking district alone is 1.6 million square feet. The special assessment charge for the 25 or 24, 25 year will be collected in 25, 26 fiscal year at $80,032, which is roughly almost five cents a square foot. Property owners who have parking within the property that is open to public, customers or users of the building can apply for a credit. That credit can reduce the amount owed for the property and other properties owned by the same owner within 300 feet to a minimum of $0. So using the $15 credit council provided the prior year, parking district number three would have an estimated credit of approximately $10,012, leaving $7,020 of special assessment amount collectible. We're asking council to approve, setting the board of equalization date to October 14th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Hawsey?
I would move to approve Resolution 2025-311.
And Mr. Conley?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
9F, approving fiscal year 2025 to 2026 general property and community redevelopment authority tax request. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This is setting the property tax request for the city and CRA. The 25 valuation for the city of Grand Island, increase of 24 valuation by $378,866, or 8.1%. If the city applies the 24, 25 mil levy of .275631 to the new valuation of $5 billion, the city's property tax revenue would be $14,060, a tax increase of $1 million. The city and community redevelopment authority tax ask for fiscal year 2026 is $13,653, which is leaving our tax ask the same as we have the last six to seven years. And up here, I just wanted to show everybody the graph that we had last night. So that's the graph of our mil levy. So the city tax levy in 2025 was .261049, and the proposed mil levy would go to .241484. For the CRA, last year is 0.1, it was .0178086, and it would reduce in '26 to .015805. The property tax for fiscal '26 would be $12,207,540 for the general fund and $798,000 for CRA, for a total of $13,653. Thank you.
Gerald Poles, would you like to speak?
No.
Nope, you have 9F down on here, too?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Vaverechek, are you motioning to speak?
If I could, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was going to initially touch base on this upcoming on the city budget, but then when I saw you had this specifically on resolutions, I omitted that opportunity to Jill, so I appreciate the consideration. I would just point out that, that once again, when you look back at the history of the tax asking from the city, some of you may remember, but when the sales tax was passed some 20, some some of you may remember, but when the sales tax was passed some 20, some years ago, the property tax rate was reduced by 70% from the city's property tax rate. And as you look at what's occurred in the last several years, and in some respects, I don't know if we, if you don't brag enough, but yet when you go ahead and consider the fact that contrary to what some news media reported today, this asking is not flat, you're, the city's mil rate will be reduced. So I think that's commendable, and when you think and look at all the other political subdivisions, they also could go ahead and possibly do the same. I think that's a good measurement and a good challenge to say, hey, there's ways that you can accommodate this because indeed it's a primary focus for many people and a detriment for fixed income, but also business owners. So I just commend that recommendation. The second portion I would just touch on is the CRA levy. And I understand why it's shared, because indeed, when you compare the two, it's a way to minimize and lower both. But I also believe that if we really want to go ahead and grow and we really want to develop, the CRA rate really deserves consideration by that board to have a recommendation to either maintain the rate or even potentially increase it. Because as you know, trying to do the same dollar amount in redevelopment next year compared to last year is going to be less. If you're devoting $700,000 plus for redevelopment, it's not going to go as far. And I think we're giving up roughly 40% of the ability of the CRA's discretionary consideration to redevelop. So going forward, I know it's not going to change the recommendation before you. I appreciate that. But going forward, I, look at the CRA and knowing it's its own tax entity, but by reducing the rate each and every year, we're minimizing the success that we could have in spurring new development, new entrepreneurs, that I just heard is being worked on with the LB840 grant. But it's a sign that we need to go ahead and keep knowing that the CRA rate is separate. And I don't think anyone would really notice the difference, even if it would remain the same or even considered to be inched up a little bit each and every year. So I just, once again, wanted to make that remark. I appreciate so much of what you're doing, and I want to elaborate beyond that, but I would appreciate the opportunity later on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2025-312.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second that motion.
Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, I know Chad's out in the hallway. Can I have him come in? I hope you heard some of what Jay was talking about on the CRA. Did you get to hear most of that?
I did.
Okay, I just, I want to address that because I think it's important to alleviate any concerns that former Mayor Vaverechek might have. But I've been part of the CRA now for a year plus, I think. In your opinion, and from what I understand, being in those meetings and what you're asking for through the CRA is based on realistic expectations of what requests and demands might be coming forward. Good part of that, is that correct?
That is general, yes. I would say that is generally correct. We have requests from other entities that are, well, do you think the CRA would be interested in funding this? Sometimes it's, no, we can't fund that because it's not in a CRA area. Other times it is, yes, they might be. You can make a request. Well, how much money would you have? And there's certainly the possibility that if we had another $300,000, and I'm pulling that number out of the air, that that would be something that would support things potentially at Foner Park. 20 years ago, when the Heartland Events Center was built, the CRA paid for redoing the parking lot out there. Granted them over $500,000 at that point in time as part of that project. We've done some of those kinds of projects in the past. Could they be done? Yes, they could. Under current budget constraints, it's a little bit more difficult to say, yes, we can do that. The CRA, as you know, Mitch, has talked about increasing the amount that we give for facade projects. Generally, we've limited that up to $100,000, except in, except in kind of extreme circumstances. But $100,000 doesn't go nearly as far in 2025 as it did in 2015. We're all, we all experience that. So does it make as much of a difference in the project as it did before? We may get more projects, may be able to do more, and have a larger influence with additional funding. Can I promise that we will? No. And Councilman Hossi regularly asks, well, where's your budget? What, where are you putting the money back in? How are you doing that? Tomorrow, we're going to finally pay off the grant given to the Heady Building for the life safety grant. Seven years later, I believe. Those projects take time, and they take, they can take a lot of time. And we had those funds seven years ago. We have held those funds until they got their occupancy certificates because that is our proof that they actually achieved what we were hoping they would achieve. Would they have liked us to make partial payments? Yes. We don't make partial payments. We, we wait till the project is done. Did that?
Well, so my, my point is, and I've been in those meetings, and I, I would anticipate, and I believe that if you saw the need out there and people were coming with you with, with requests, that you would share that with the CRA group and say, as budget time comes along, and I know a lot of people that you've dealt with, whether it's on facades or other projects, even life safety, it's a matter of timing.
Right.
So it's, yes, you'd like this money, but when will the project be done? So if you had more people coming to you saying, Chad, can we do this for $300,000? And you said, well, we don't have it now, but based on your project, we probably could do that next year. You would bring that to the CRA group. And if it was budget time and you said, I really feel strongly that we need to up this by 300,000 because we've got people out here waiting, you would probably encourage the group to do that. I'm, I'm assuming that's what you do, just based on the meetings I've been in.
Yes, but we're also very cognizant of property tax ask, and it is property tax dollars. And what can we, what can we get by with? Which is a, I know is a very much different attitude than former Mayor Vaverechek is saying, which is, how much can we invest in this? If the direction is, how much can we invest? We can find places where we could do things like that. Again, we have staffing capacity issues just within the planning department. We're not a very large department, so there's only so much that we can accomplish as staff also.
Yeah. Well, my point is that being part of the group, I feel confident that if you saw the need out there, you would be sharing that need with the CRA group, and then we could make those decisions. So I don't want the mayor to think that things are being squelched for on purpose, but I think as Chad sees the demands, he brings them forward. They've already shifted facade amounts by quite a bit because that's where the demand was. We see the life safety grants. It's probably one of those programs that's dying out because where the funds were going to be designated are pretty much being built up. So we're not having a lot of the upstairs apartments in rail side in some of these areas. Fourth Street might be a possibility, but a lot of those apartments are already built. So I think the CRA is doing a good job, but I don't think they're being stingy. And I don't think they're, they're not doing as much as they could for the most part because I strongly believe that if you saw the need there, you'd be sharing that need with us. That, that's my opinion, that, based on what I've seen. Now, yours, the other hat you're wearing is I'm fiscally responsible. But if you, if you, I know, I know where you're at. But if you saw the needs, I think those would be verbalized in those meetings. Then decisions would be made based on that information. Okay, good, thanks.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, as you know, I've talked on this for, for a long, long time. I completely agree with Mitch in that I understand what Mayor Vaverechek is talking about. I think statutorily, we can chart, we can have a levy up to 2.6 or 0.026. We're now at 15, .015805. So there is that 40% gap that Mayor Vaverechek spoke to. Over the years, as I've looked at this, we want Grand Island to succeed, and this is one tool for success. We have in the past gotten to where we had an accumulation of cash of up to three years' worth of tax askings in the bank at one time. And so, because the projects weren't developing as fast as they were, and so the projects weren't there. And so that's when I reach in as a council member, and we want to prudently be successful. You know, we want, we're not trying to impede success, but in the same token, it just, some of these projects just take time. And we, if the projects were here, we would all be about the 2.6 cents per hundred dollars. So they haven't been, and if they are here, I, we want to hear that, too. You know, and so if the demand is there, we're all about being successful. Bring it forward, and we'll listen. But I think historically, we have not, our demand has not exceeded our ability to fund it. It's the other way around, and the worst thing, in my opinion, is having a government with a bank, with a bank of three years' worth of your taxes. I'd rather it's in my pocket rather than the city's pocket or the CRA's pocket. And I just, I just, that's the worst prospect for me, is to have a government hold my money, particularly three years' worth of it.
I don't disagree with you. It is the responsibility of, of the taxing entities to spend the tax dollars they receive for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Yeah, so I like the life safety stuff. I like the facade, and maybe there's a third program that could come out of it. But nonetheless, we want to make sure that we have enough funds for the demand that's out there. And I think this budget does that very thing.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
9G, approving downtown improvement district number two, the ramp, property tax request. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. 20, 2025 valuations for the downtown improvement district number two, the parking ramp, increased over the 24 valuation by 6.7 million, or 7.8%. The downtown improvement district number two ramp does not request an increase in property tax, thereby decreasing the mil levy from .010470 to .009711. The revenue request is $9,090. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-313.
Mr. Pollak? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10A, consideration of approving salary ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we suspend the rules.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmidt, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the annual salary ordinance. It goes along with the annual budget. So this includes changes in wages according to union contracts that have been previously negotiated. Along with that, the non-union group, in which this year we did a wage survey. This also creates the classifications discussed in the budget process. So the budget and purchasing manager, controller, lead EIC tech, operations training and planning coordinator, and the planner, too. And then it removes some classifications that we aren't using anymore. This also includes all the changes to the FOP contract you approved a few meetings ago, makes some adjustments to clothing allowance in the fire department, and adjusts VIBA contributions for non-union. What it does not include is ASPI and wastewater. Those two contracts are currently under negotiations yet, and we should bring those forward in the near future. Thank you.
Gerald Poles, did you want to speak on this?
Thank you again. I, my question was, these wages are mostly paid by what we, what the city collects, I believe. And I, I, do we compare the wages that we're paying with what the private sector is paying? I think the Chamber of Commerce, somebody keep, kind of keeps track of what the average wages are and pay raises and things. And I just, and I know we're negotiating, union negotiations are always tough. But, you know, do the, are the wages we're paying comparable to what? When we pay an increase, when we give it a percentage increase, are these increases comparable to what is being paid in the private sector? Because the private sector is what is paying, paying these wages. And I, I just wondered if that is part of the consideration, or do we compare the wages that we're going to pay for union employees with other cities and other states? Because other cities, other states have a, usually have a larger tax base. Like from, so I, just if I could get, if you could clarify.
Mr. Schmidt can clarify that for you?
Thank you. Yeah, the, the process for setting wages is set by state statute. So we look at cities that, there has to be qualifications to it. So you can't have a city that's less than half your size, or you can't compare to a city that's more than double your size. So we're an MSA, and what we do is we start looking at populations in 50-mile concentric circles. And considering our size and our location, the cities we do compare to are out of state. So it's usually Iowa, South Dakota, Kansas, Missouri. Usually you get into like Colorado that's too far out, so you, and there's some large, larger metros out there that we don't compare to. So we're not comparing to Lincoln or Omaha, but all the other cities within Nebraska don't meet the criteria. We're just this kind of unique size of MSA that it's, it's outside. But it's all set by statute how we have, we must compare to those cities.
I, I understand. I just kind of disagree with the process.
It, it would be a legislative change.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve ordinance 10,032.
Mr. Sheard?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I think in order to Jerry's point, you know, I think Aaron did talk about it, but we have had discussions at the council level about could we ever, should we ever include local, local matches? Because it has certainly been discussed in the council over the decades. Because it, it makes sense, but it's not, it's not made it into statute. You know, and so unfortunately, in the statute, and I think our non-union array today is Ames, Iowa, Dubuque, Iowa, Iowa City, Iowa, Jefferson City, Missouri, Lawrence, Kansas, Manhattan, Kansas, Rapid City, South Dakota, Sioux City, Iowa, and St. Joseph, Missouri. I think that's probably the non-union array.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have Hastings or Carney or, you know, in the non-union array. Every union might have a different array or potentially could have a different array, but.
There's a lot of overlapping, but there, there are a few nuances.
Yeah, so I think the council has, has made the same argument Jerry has, has brought forward many times in the past, although not recently, unsuccessfully. And comparability in Nebraska's been around for at least 40 years in, in one form or another. It might have changed slightly, but comparability is the law in Nebraska. And really what they're trying to do is, in, when they compare municipality to municipality, I think Mike at one time talked about 80% match, and I think I talked about 85%. I think statutorily, there might be a 70% minimum match between the job duties and the time that they spend doing the work. And 100% match would be a perfect match. They'd be doing identical, but that doesn't exist anywhere, no matter who you compare to. So whether you're at 80 or 85%, as Mike and I have talked to, those are good matches. You know, but it's, it is trying to get a match to job duties and time spent in, in doing that. I really wish we could, because that's where our labor market is. I wish we could include local, local matches, local jobs, but we don't. But we don't, and we're not allowed to by law. So we have talked about it. I wish there was another way in, but at this point, we're all out of state right now.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10B, consideration on fiscal year 2025 to 2026, annual single-city budget and annual appropriations bill. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. O'Neill.
I move that we suspend the rules.
Mr. Brown.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Brown, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have hopefully approval of the fiscal year 26 proposed budget. Do a little overview of the changes from last year. This budget document, it's the single most important document used by our organization, and it helps us in the direction of giving the services that we provide to our citizens. The following is a comparison of fiscal year 26 proposed budget to fiscal year 25 adopted budget. The total 26 proposed budget dispersments and transfers is 8.3%, or 25.9 million higher than 25 adopted budget. Difference is mainly due to using general fund excess cash reserves and bond proceeds for several parks projects, Good Life district dispersments, and grants placeholder in order to have appropriation authority. All funds revenue projections for fiscal year 26 increased by 1.2%, or 3.4 million over the 25 budget. As we had just indicated in the previous agenda items, 25 valuations for the city went up 8.1%, 378 million. And again, we are reducing our mill levy for the seventh year in a row. General fund revenues, that's misspelling, for 26 is projected to be 0.7% higher than fiscal 25 adopted budget. Personnel expenses are budgeted at 6.5% higher than 25, while operating expenses are lower by 3.48%. Overall, the increase in expenses is 4.3%, or 2.2 million over fiscal year 25. Total sales tax revenues forecasted 29.7 million for fiscal year 26. It's a 2% increase, which is a $582,751 increase over the 25 budget. The increase is in line with recent trends in sales tax for Grand Island, but slightly lower than forecast inflationary data. Other revenue sources in the general fund account for 35.4 million, a decrease over 25 budget of $55,000, is negative 0.2%, so very de minimis. Below here is a list of capital equipment and projects. It's a long list. The total capital improvement projects that we have is $82 million for fiscal year 26. So this is all available on the website for any and all to see. Personnel changes. So the city is adding additional FTEs and reclassifications. So the additional FTEs are a police officer, two and a half community service officers, which is related to animal control, a parks maintenance worker, an attorney, and five library part-time workers, each working 16 hours a week, so equals 80 hours. Council had discussed earlier in this budget season about an office manager being reclassed to a support services administrator that has been pulled out of the budget for further discussion in fiscal year 26. Other reclasses, we're moving, and the finance department was to move an assistant finance director to a controller, and an accountant to a budget and purchasing manager. We have in streets an accounting technician going to administrative assistant. And in utilities, we have a utility production engineer going on to a power plant training coordinator, and a senior power plant operator going to a lead EIC technician. I used to know what EIC was, so I don't know right now. Other than that, the budget process, I think, went well, and I'll turn it over to council.
Jay Vaverech, would you like to speak?
Well, thank you for the opportunity, and I guess that's why I'm here, because I happened to read where no one was here yesterday during the public hearing on tax asking and so forth. I would have been here, but my grandson had a soccer game at Northwest, and I figured, well, that's more important. But nonetheless, I'm just here to say a couple of things. First, thank you, and as one that has been involved in similar to what you're doing here, but the city budget is such a monstrous task. It probably takes the longest amount of time, expertise, people, you name it, visioning, priorities, and yet, you know, it might be the single biggest thing that's accomplished each and every year, as opposed to seeing something with the groundbreaking and so forth. So I would just want to say thank you with appreciation for all the efforts that go into a city budget. I earlier said, I don't think you brag enough, and I just marvel at what is accomplishing in our city today. And it's easy to see an elevator shaft going up for a new motel, or a new fire station, or a new fire station wagon, or the flashing lights of a law enforcement officer. Those things people can see, but you can't see all the different things go into a city budget than what you're doing. And yet, I'm also cognizant of the fact that you have so many plates that you're spinning, and so many resources to go ahead and accomplish just maintaining what we're doing and what you're providing is no simple task, let alone being able to grow. And if we're not growing, and all you have to do is sometimes travel in western Nebraska or western Kansas and see what rural America has experienced, because if you're not growing, you're doomed. And indeed, Grand Island is growing. Also, I'm just, you know, if you're not involved in something, you kind of lose track, and all you can do is kind of refer to what you knew when. But I would just say this, seeing the Parks and Recreation budget of $29 million of improvements is staggering. And if we didn't have the resources and weren't growing, there's no way you could accomplish devoting what you're trying to do there. Because once again, a couple of us can remember back in 2011, Mr. Steve Austin had his whole capital improvement budget was $125,000. So here you are, talking $29 million. And if people think, hey, $16 million is going to Island Oasis, when I asked Todd earlier, I said, what are you doing? He says, a lot. Well, it's 33 years in the making. It's time to reinvest. So all those things are great. I'm also assuming, when I look at the budget, and I don't print that thing out, I mean, it'd be this thick, isn't it, Mayor? I mean, it's 400 pages, and I don't go through it. But I would just say, broad strokes, I'm not surprised, but yet, you have two people here in the council chambers for a city budget. And I would hope people would get engaged and are indicating their thoughts to you if they're not here. But I understand why they're not here, a lot of priorities. But when I look at visioning, someone said the other day, when I was at a conference in Kansas, actually, if you're not visioning what could happen, and if you're not planning for it, it's not going to happen. And, you know, I think that's right. If you're not envisioning, once again, making incremental steps to extend the hike and bike trail south, I mean, it's not going to happen. And it doesn't need to be a destination of a trail. It's part of the experience that people use each and every time they're outdoors, just like, I don't walk, my wife is a walker, but when she goes around Stewart Museum, she's not going there to see Stewart Museum. She's enjoying, as other people, the experience of being on a hike and bike trail. I would hope that's not lost, that can be looked at down the road. Also, when you look at other needs and things and ideas, it's been talked about for years, an indoor aquatics facility. Granted, you're making the investment in the Island Oasis water park. I would hope indoor aquatics can indeed be something that we can get done sometime. And also, the senior citizens facility, it also needs to be looked at and maybe even considered relocation to where it can reach out to more people in today's society, and maybe cohabitat a facility like that. We all know the State Fair, another outstanding success. I agree with Mayor Steele's remarks that indeed, this is a brand that we're all proud of. And I just see so many different people coming there, enjoying the State Fair, and upping economic opportunity, but family enjoyment. Parking is a problem, there's no doubt. I know you're working maybe, hopefully, on some solutions for event center parking there that would go ahead and complement people to come here, because if we're going to make it so difficult to get in the facility and park, it's just one more reason not to get out of your easy chair and stay home. And we don't want that. And when you look at all the different lodging facilities that are going on, I mean, there's, what, two or three right now that are being built? I mean, they can provide the occupancy for more visitors if we maintain support for those in future budgets. So when you look about all the different things you're accomplishing, I marvel, and I congratulate you, and I appreciate your leadership. And that's where I'm going to come to this topic. I don't think leadership should go unnoticed and unrewarded. And I realize why no one ever wants to say, hey, we ought to have more compensation. But I personally believe council and mayor's leadership ought to be increased in compensation. It's not part of this budget, but I would just hasten, after this is approved, why not? And if I have need to reach out to Mr. Stelk or Ms. Mendoza, my council representatives, and say, hey, bring that forward for discussion. I would think any mayor's position, and none of you that I know of, or no person on this earth yet, has indicated any desire to serve in a leadership capacity. So if you have that discussion the next month or two before anyone ever files, or everyone ever gets a hint, there's no issues with having an open discussion on that. I personally believe any mayor at least ought to have a 40-hour minimum, ought to be worth 40 hours of minimum wage. I mean, we're investing hundreds and thousands of dollars in elected and positions each and every day. A minimum wage position for a mayor ought to be a given, even to council members. You know, 20 hours a week at minimum wage ought to be something that ought to be considered. Because I personally take leadership important, and I know everyone's doing this for the right reasons. You're not doing it for pay, but I also know that stewardship ought to be something that would be considered down the road. It's not part of this budget, but also brings up the fact that this finally. As a longtime resident of Grand Island, I sure appreciate each of your efforts, all the city department members that are chipping on this. That's a giant task, and I just congratulate you on bringing this forward in a very respectful manner and professionalism. Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Thank you for your very kind words. It's always nice to see you.
Gerald Poles, would you like to speak?
Thank you. I hate doing this. I just, some of the things in the budget, the TIF program and things like that, I think have, and the state auditor has mentioned it, too, that these programs are inflationary, contributing maybe to higher property taxes. But there was a day when companies used to call it overhead when they invested in a new project, and now they ask for a subsidy or deferred taxes, is what it is. And I really wasn't going to speak, but, I'm sorry, Chuck. When you said, there's one thing worse, that you hate seeing the government with my money in their pocket, it's like, well, I also hate to see the government spend my money. And that's, the other thing I was going to bring up was that water park. And I know, Mayor, I didn't see the path to the park in the budget. I don't know if it's there now or not. But it is a wonderful idea. It really is. I spoke, but it's just before its timing. But it thinks, that is kind of the discretionary thing that I think budgeting is supposed to do. You say, well, we can do this next year, we can do that following year. But the one thing in that budget that just grabs my craw is $16 million for that Island Oasis, a facility that is only open 90 days a year. And I didn't get a chance to ask, but I think the number they gave for budgeting for maintenance was $2.7 million. And I guess one of my questions was, is that 2.7, considering this new water park, this $16 million expansion? Because that's going to be affecting next year's budget. But anyway, the $16 million is not in my pocket, it's not in your pocket, but it's government spending, and that's what. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 10, 033.
Mr. Sheard.
I'll second.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. This budget is now, just about spends a million dollars a day. We're not quite there yet, but it's not very far off. It takes all 10 of our council members to pass this. It's not just a budget, but it's the program of services. There are things in this budget that I wish were not in there. There are things that I wish were in there. But that's the whole discussion. I listen to taxpayers, ratepayers, neighbors, people on the golf course, people at Little Edgerance. I listen to people all year round, and that's where this culminates, in this process and this vote tonight. And what I can tell you is, this is the most important thing a city council member does in the entire year. Today, I was going through the Grand Island City Cemetery, and it looks great. And I think that is indicative of every city department that I see. We do good work for citizens. Our employees are the best that there are. This budget's going to have my support, not because it has everything I want in there, not because it does everything that it should do, there's probably more things it could do. But all in all, this is a good process. It's thorough. Pat has done a great job of going over and over where we're at, where we're at with all these projects, and there are a lot of them. It's not perfect, but it is absolutely the most important thing we do, and we spend a lot, a lot of time going through this with constituents, with other council members. And I'm glad we're at the point where we're at now, but this is a big number, you know, almost a million dollars a day is what it takes to run the city of Grand Island. Our department, our employees are the best that there are. And so I am appreciative of everybody who has to implement this program of services. So this, millions of dollars in this budget are all going to be implemented by city employees. And so I want to thank them for what they're going to be doing next year and doing it for our citizens. So thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the process as well, and I want to touch on a little bit of what Chuck said here. I'm not sure when I'm going to get there, but I'm going to get there, I think. But first of all, Patrick, thank you for all the work that you've done on this, and I think you've had a heavy lift this year because we were short on financial support. And I know you've probably had the lift a lot heavier than you have in the past, and I know you've had some support. I truly hope you have. But I want to thank you for all that you're doing, too, because this is a huge event for you every year, and there's so much to sort through. I tell you quite often, it's like herding cats, trying to figure out what 10 people here want to do. And I ask you quite often, do you think you're going to be able to determine what 10 people want without a vote? Well, yeah, you're going to do your best. And I think you did, pretty darn well. I have some disappointments in the overall budget as well, and we're not going to get everything we want. I guess I do want to touch on this just for sure, because I didn't see it when we covered the projects, but I did not see a trail project to Camp Augustine in there. That was pulled out this year?
That was pulled out.
Okay, so that was pulled out, and I don't have any problems with that. In fact, my mental anguish, ulcers, and heartburn all went away very quickly, if that's true. So I'm healed. Now, I know it'll come back, and we'll talk about it later, but in the meantime, we'll look for additional revenue sources, and that's going to be nice. Because if we can chip away at that 4.3, and, by the way, Keith, you are my hero for going back and rethinking that through and asking the right questions. my hero for going back and rethinking that through and asking the right questions that we need to look at for something of that magnitude. And I hope it all shakes out really nice. It's still going to be way too much for what I want, but I understand the need for it. But I'm glad that we're waiting till next year to talk about it again. The positives that I do see is the park projects appear to all be in the budget. And so that's big. We have two of those that are funded by the community. We had private donations. I think that's huge, that those need to be supported, because some of us probably here supported some of those as well, and we want to see those come together. And according to Todd, he thinks a lot of those can be done in the next year. And I think it's phenomenal if that's true, especially Island Oasis, I would love to see that. But even we heard about Ryder Park tonight, the huge impact that might have. And then, of course, we've got the other projects that we've talked about as well. But Island Oasis is huge, and it's more than just a new water park. We're talking about outdoor miniature golf, and we're talking about splash pads, and we're talking about reinventing it to Island Oasis ten point oh, because that's what the communities ask for, and I think we have the opportunity to deliver that. I think the five part-time library employees are important. I know that was on Celine's list last year, and we didn't get there, but this year, the council says, yeah, we can see the benefit of that. One of the negatives that I see, I was, let me go back and tell you part of my frustration. I think we were almost in a perfect process this year, but we came up short by one voting meeting. To me, that's where we came up short. And I think if we would have had that one voting meeting, the things that Chuck said aren't in there that he wishes were, and some that I, you know, wish weren't in there and whatever, we could have made some finite decisions that night of what the council's will was. My frustration is that we don't know what all the council wanted. We know what the vocal minority wanted, but we don't know what everybody else wanted. So, one of my frustrations is we don't give our quieter council members an opportunity to share their thoughts, and that is usually comes with a vote, where you're going to ask, are you supporting of this or you're not? And we're going to get more, we're going to get more input that way. We missed that, and it was all timing. And I understand that. And I hope next year, when we get into this whole gigantic thing, that we have that one meeting before, I don't know if it has to be before or after the public hearing, probably before, to where we have a chance to vote on things that there's a little controversy over. Because that's where you had to sort it out. Now, I listened to that Thursday night meeting that I wasn't here, almost two and a half hours you all were here, I'm going to tell you one thing right off the bat, you all look good, really good on TV. You look really good, and that's without a hair and makeup department. So Jeremy, I don't know how you do it, but you make the council look really good. And that was a great meeting. But there were a lot of things discussed in that meeting that there was no consensus. There was the concern about the reclassification in the police department. It was pulled ultimately, but maybe it would have been voted on one way or another, you know, had we had that meeting. There was some of the other issues that came up. The trail could have been maybe defined another way, maybe not the way I wanted it, but I'm happy that it's postponed. I would have liked to have had a chance to arm wrestle with Carrie again over that other attorney. I was just hoping for another chance to arm wrestle with her and see if, you know, how badly she really needed that attorney. She did a great job defending herself on Thursday's meeting, but I'm not, I'm not personally there yet. It's in the budget, and I'm okay with it, because that, we are okay with that. The other thing that I know Chuck had talked about, and I talked about it at a much lesser value, was it is great to say that we have not increased our property tax ask for seven years, but how much more would it have been if we could have said we were able to even reduce the ask? Now, I think Chuck was a little aggressive when he was saying one to two million, I'm not that bold, but I would have been in favor of maybe a quarter million increment and just see how it rode. But we didn't even get a chance to talk about that. It's not a bad thing, but it was an opportunity for us. One of the things that I tell people about the council is that we have a voice and a vote. That's, that's the power of this position. We have a voice, and we have a vote. We had a lot of opportunities for our voice in this budget, but we, again, we failed to have that final vote where we could have really known exactly the will of all the council. That's the only criticism, and I'm not bashing all the stuff that's been done, I just, I wish we would have had that one more meeting. It's just, it was a timing issue. The things that show up in the budget that we really didn't talk about, and I would think it's just good to know publicly, of the Island Oasis project, you really only budgeted four million out of the cash, excess cash account, but it's a sixteen million dollar project. So what are the plans for a sixteen million dollar Island Oasis project with only four million coming out of cash?
Borrowing eleven point six million.
And the timing on that?
I think, once this is fifteen days after adoption, then I start working on that process.
Okay.
That process will go fairly quickly. We put out the RFPs for financing the solid waste facility today. We'll have an answer by September twenty-sixth. So, that's the kind of turnaround that we're getting.
Okay, very good. Then the final thing that bothers me a little bit, and this is just, I'm going to just bounce this off you again, because somewhere along the way, it was decided that we should probably take fifteen million of the twenty-two excess cash balance to put toward these projects. And I'm kind of curious why you felt comfortable to take fifteen million out of twenty-two and not leave a little more cushion in an excess cash account around ten or so, it's just a number I'm throwing out there. There's a reasoning that you've done that, but I'm going to give you a chance to share that.
So, on my projection, I believe it's a little over seven million that I had in excess reserves. I feel very comfortable with that number. And that also works out with borrowing eleven six. So, I'm trying to keep my payments the same, kind of flat, just so that we could still keep doing those smaller park projects.
Okay, so you don't anticipate changing your thought process on that at all to give yourself, you must feel very comfortable. To me, I think we've had this conversation before, cash is so important, especially today. We don't know what's going to happen through this administration, we don't know, we don't know the future, we don't. To me, taking fifteen million out is a little aggressive, maybe a little more aggressive than what I would have thought. And if you're okay with that, I know you're the mastermind of all this. I kind of wish we'd be sitting at more of a ten million dollar.
If you, if you add the seven million on to the excess, or not excess, into the cash reserves we put away at twenty-five percent, you're at twenty, I believe, that's the number. So, that's why I feel very good about that.
Just having that cushion. Because as I looked at your five-year projection sheet, that cash reserve disappeared, excess cash reserve disappeared within a couple of years, pretty fast. And then we start eating into the other, the policy.
Yeah, and I think it's, and I truly appreciate the feedback, I really do, because that's the only way we get better. What I think we need to concentrate on going forward is building our revenue base. So, you know, we have, you know, we have Chick-fil-A's coming on, we have Target coming on, you know, and hopefully that is a net increase of a pretty good sizable amount. But what else can we do? You know, like the Heartland Events Center, we have a new contractor in there, getting new things going on in there. You could, you could see the effects of food and beverage tax and stuff like that. So, it's important now to start building that revenue base, and I think that's one of the things we're going to look at this coming year. One of those is the hotel occupation tax. That'll be coming up to council shortly, and those will be some options.
Well, that's the only thing that I'm really concerned about, I just, I think cash is just, and here's the other thing that I think about the cash. The cash that we have in excess cash reserves is earning interest, which helps pay theoretically the interest that we have on the bonds. So that, that cash that's accumulating interest is offsetting a portion of that. So that's why I'm not worried about bonding a little more, because we've still got that ability to, to generate interest that will reduce that overall amount. So that's, that's why seven million really is, seems to me to be low, especially looking at the five-year projection sheet. And I know we don't want to be fat and happy, and we won't be fat and happy all the time, because it's going to change, we know that. But I think, again, overall, we've done very well. The only thing I want to add here, and I wrote this on a note to myself, and this is to all our council members here, because we have a few of us that like to talk, okay? We do. And we're used to it. So, we were more comfortable with that. But what we need to understand in a budget process, that silence is not necessarily consent. So, when I don't hear opinions from other members, I get concerned about where are we really at as a council? And that's where a vote really forces that. But I just encourage people to not be fearful of sharing your opinions, because really, there's ten of us here, and although four or five may do most of the talking, everybody's input is invaluable. And it doesn't matter if we agree with me or anybody else, but I learn from others, and that's what's important. So again, overall, I think the budget process was almost perfect, except for that last voting meeting. So we're getting there, and next year, we'll see how it all shakes out. But a great job overall. And to Chuck's point, Grand Island does not just good work, I think we set a standard, we have a standard of excellence. And I look that, I look at that all over the city. And that's worth paying for, we have to pay for that. And I want to continue to be able to support that as a council member, and I know that the public appreciates that. It's something that we kind of expect now, but it costs money. And we want to make sure we're doing it right. And I think you, Patrick, summed it up very well in a couple of interviews where you've talked about not raising the property tax ask, because we're finding ways to get the same services by being more efficient. And that's the name of the game, we always want to do that. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing as well.
Mr. Lanfair?
I'm going to be brief. I don't support this budget. As a whole, it's a good budget. And I got to commend Mr. Brown for all his work. I can't imagine what you have to go through. But there are just too many high-dollar projects that I feel are a poor use of public money. We have rehab buildings in the next year or two that we have to rehab. That's going to take a lot of this cash. I think it would be better to hold on to it. So, I'm voting no.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. Counter to that, I'm going to go ahead and say I'm voting yes on this. I agree with some of what you just said, Doug, but I think, I think this is a really strong budget for a lot of the reasons that have already been said by some of our more experienced members on this council that have done this more times than I have. I do have a question about the trail. I was surprised to not see it in here after our last big conversation about it. I kind of got the sense that it was more popular among, maybe not universal, but I kind of thought after listening to Brad Melama give his Footloose-style speech, that there was some excitement for it. What changed on that? Because I have a very important constituent at home that was expecting it, so, and a few others.
I can address that. Part of the issue with the trail was that we were going to do private fundraising, and I was going to be one of the fundraisers. I thought the lack of enthusiasm from the council would create headwinds trying to raise private money. So I believe it's best that the trail be held over for a future time, because when you, when you go out and you try to raise money in the community and people are thinking, well, the council isn't really behind this, that makes it very difficult. Maybe next year, sentiments will change, but I thought for the private effort, it would be a big lift. And that's not the fault anybody's opinion about the wisdom of the trail, it's just to say, I thought that the time was not opportunity, opportune for the private effort, and the decision to pull it is entirely mine.
That's good to know, because I was going to chew your, no. I, that's, thanks for the explanation. That's, that's helpful. I kind of agree that it's probably not needed in the next year. I kind of thought that a lot of those comments were probably fair. I just don't want to see it put aside for too long, because I do believe in that project. I believe in it a heck of a lot more at the four point three million than the seven million, so let's keep that price coming down. I did have another question that came up. We've talked about the how extensive this project, this process is, and the amount of time that we all put into it. And someone asked me, why don't you guys do a two-year budget versus a one-year budget? Is there a reason for that, that is easy to explain? I see Mike saying no already. Chuck kind of gave a funny look. They do a two-year budget, and everything's great. Is it, but I mean, are you thinking, is the reason that we don't do that because of the unknowns? Or is it, what, I guess, what is the reason?
So, it is a little bit more complex, right? So you're forecasting out two years. And then you're not really getting away from doing the budget every two years, because you're going to come back and, at year one, and just start doing some adjustments. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And I know that Jay mentioned paying the electeds more, and we did talk about that early on. If you want to just remind Jay how we discussed that?
Yeah, absolutely. There was a wage survey done, Human Resource did that, there is an increase in there. I think it's a good idea. I think Jay had a great idea to bring it forward here in October, November, for council discussion. So, perfect time to do that.
But it wouldn't take place until after the next, next seating of the council?
Yes, correct.
Which I think is a hundred percent fair. Twenty hours minimum wage, huh? And reduce taxes, huh? Okay. That's interesting. I think that's a fun topic to discuss.
Absolutely.
I just want to echo, yes, this has been an enlightening process this year, and all of you guys up here, and you guys out there, and your spouses, thank you all. It's been good.
Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm like Jack, I thought the four point three million had been allocated for the trail, whether we used it or not. That's the understanding I got from one of the meetings we had, but that's neither here nor there at the time. If we need four point three million, I guess we'll just have to wait. I want to thank everybody on the council. I know that a lot of you are not talkers. I hear a lot of things from the council that I don't hear out here on the floor. I don't like blowing my own horn or tooting off about things that I don't know anything But I want to thank Pat for doing an excellent job this year. This is probably the best, best budget I've seen. And I don't know about the mayor, but I know in the few years he's been here, this is the best one I've seen.
Thank you. I, to Mitch's point, I wish we had another week, so.
Mr. Stelk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am one of the quiet ones. I have a lot of business sense, accounting background, and a lot of business school, and a lot of running my own business. I like the process, I think it's good, I think there's a lot of good feedback. As far as the budget goes, there are some things that were left out of it. I like what we did on the reserves and that. The thing I like to see for the budget is something about, what are we going to do about the law enforcement training center? That, that is still out there and left field, we don't know when that's going to come and how much it's going to cost. On the, on the trail to, on South Locust, I like to see that. I'd like to see us maybe set some funds aside for that and grow it over time, instead of just kicking it down the road, like we've done other projects, let's, let's start saving for it and put some reserves for it. I like the water park project, that's, that's going to be a gem for us, that's going to help the Foner Park campus. And I just want to continue developing the Foner Park campus, because I think it still needs a lot of work and a lot of because I think it still needs a lot of work and a lot of support from the city in that. I like the way we vote on things. We have input in that. I like your thinking on building our reserves and figuring ways to get other money with the hotel tax and that. I just think we just need to be smarter at what we do and work together. But overall, sure, I'm not happy with everything on it, but, you know, you can never be. I'm pretty conservative, and I like where we're coming, and I like where we're going. And I like what Grand Island's doing, and I just want to drum in our parade and keep the parade going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Pat, I just want to kind of commend you, in particular, for finding ways to spend the reserves down a little bit. I think it's really important that we take some of that money and give it back to the community. It's not really prudent to use taxpayer money to hoard it, to be on levels that we really need. I think that's very important. I've just never been a fan of that idea. I know you're very watchful. There's a reasonable amount. We need to be prepared for a dark rainy day, but I think we've been well beyond that, and I'm really glad to see that going back to the community to do something good. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Brown?
I just want to commend you, Pat, on a stellar job that you've done. And anytime I've had any questions and asked you for anything, you've always enlightened me so I could understand what was going on and how, both sides. But I really appreciate your hard work, and the mayor.
Mr. Conley?
I'm getting pressure over here from... No, I think you did a good job. One thing, I've been on the council for seven years, and I think it's something to say about, you know, property taxes have not been raised for the last seven years. So I think city staff and the council's done a real good job at that. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I would just say that Patrick Brown has carried the work in assembling the budget over many months, going back to the late winter. That's when he starts. Patrick, your steady leadership and calm guidance has been invaluable. I thank you for your hard work. I thank you for your expertise. Well done, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
You do great work. You presented us with a great work product.
By the way, it's 872 pages.
Please vote.
N.C., consideration of approving assessments for Railside Business Improvement District. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. O'Neil?
I move to suspend the rules.
Mr. Brown?
I second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Brown, you're up.
This is the action item for the earlier agenda item for Railside Business Improvement District. This is setting the request to $150,440.79.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve ordinance 10,034.
Mr. Hossi?
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
N.D., consideration of approving assessments for Fourth Street Business Improvement District. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules, considering ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Brown, you're up.
This is the action item for the Fourth Street Business Improvement District, which was earlier in the agenda this evening. This would establish the special assessments at $39,430.31.
We have to suspend the rules first and then the regular vote?
I thought we did.
On...
We did.
Oh, it didn't record. Okay.
I move we approve 10,036.
36 or 35? Which way?
35.
35. Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, there it's back.
There.
10,035.
Any discussion?
Hold on. The motion didn't take, though, on the regular motion on 10,35.
I move we approve 10,035.
Mr. Lanfair, you're second.
There we go. Please vote. Motion adopted.
N.E., consideration of approving assessments for Foner Park Business Improvement District. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Mr. Sheard?
I move that we suspend the rules.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second the motion.
Thank you both. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Brown?
This is the action item for the Foner Park Business Improvement District for earlier in the evening. This is for special assessments set at $53,202.
Thank you. I move that we pass 10E.
Mr. Stelk?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
The last item on our agenda is executive session to update council on threat of litigation and possible authorization of settlement authority. Is there a motion? Mr. O'Neil?
I move to adjourn for executive session.
Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 9:36 PM. They're going into executive session at 9:36 PM. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted. Just one second.
Mr. Shear, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to authorize settlement of claims by mayor and city attorney pursuant to the authority requested.
Mr. Hossi?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We have completed our agenda. Thanks for everybody who participated in tonight's meeting. Thank you, council members, for an excellent meeting.